Before I gavel us into session, I've, I don't have my readers today, so everything looks like just white and black blotches. But I can see everybody really well here. I just can't see anything here. So I'll probably be using my phone to zoom in to see what I'm doing. But I know the first order of business is to call this meeting to order, which it is. Next order of business is to determine openings on the board. There's openings on subdistrict two, seven, and nine. If there's anyone here who's interested in serving on the board from those subdistricts, please identify yourself at this time. Seeing none. Moving on to the next order of business, and that is the city and state monthly reports. Do we have a report from the Honolulu Fire Department?
Yes, we do.
Hey, good to see you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Captain Glenn Camp. I'm from the Kani'oe Fire Station. Here's your incident statistics for the month of December. So we had one nuisance fire and nine activated alarms that resulted in no fires. We had 164 medical emergencies, one motor vehicle collision with a pedestrian, five motor vehicle collisions, and two hazardous materials incidents. Here's your fire safety tip, and it's concerning lithium-ion batteries. Lithium-ion batteries provide supply power to many kinds of devices, including smartphones, laptops, e-scooters, e-bikes, e-cigarettes, smoke alarms, toys, and even cars. If not used correctly or if damaged, these batteries can catch fire or explode. Always follow manufacturer instructions. Only use the battery and charging cord that was designed for the device. And replace cords that are damaged, frayed, sticky. Charge devices in a cool area with good ventilation. Do not keep charging the device or device battery after it is fully charged. E-scooters and e-bikes should only be charged outdoors. Smaller devices should be placed on a hard, non-flammable surface when charging. Never under your pillow, on your bed, or on a couch. Store batteries away from anything can catch fire. That's the tip for the month. Do I have any questions?
Questions from the board. Mr. Sakamoto.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the report, Fire Department. I sent an email on Tuesday. Sorry, I sent it too late on questions for the December 23 report from you folks. Five collisions. I was requesting on my email to see generally where these conditions occurred. And if it's a continuous place, it might be something wrong. And then the second one was the hazard materials. Do you know what kind of materials it was? And was it a residential or business?
Okay, sorry, you're cutting out a little bit on my speaker. What was the first question regarding, and what email did you send it to?
I sent to the email that was forwarded by Chair Rakhi, which was the one that was in your email.
Okay, we have six captains here with six different emails, and we rotate the neighborhood board. So I wanted to refer back to the exact email address to find that question.
It was the email that was sent to Chair Waters, I mean, Mo'akia. I don't have it on hand, but I copied it in piece.
What was the subject, please?
Yeah, what was the subject?
Subject was the collisions. Where these collisions occurred? I just wondered if it was the same place or whatever. And then the hazardous waste material, was that in a, in what area? And was it a business or residential? What kind of chemical was it?
Okay, so the collisions, you said you emailed that question. So was that for the month of November or the month of December?
December's report that was sent to Chair Rakhi.
Okay, so that was November's collisions. I'll follow up on this. And then the hazardous materials incidents you wanted to know about, was that from the report I just gave you?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Okay, so I'll need to check our incident reports, and I'll follow up with the other captains and try to find that email that you sent. And I will send those answers to that, to your email, and then I'll include them in the next month's neighborhood board.
Appreciate it. Thank you for your service, Major.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions?
Any other questions for the Honolulu Fire Department? Please come forward to the microphone and state your name when you get there, please.
Michael Lyman. One quick question. Out of those 164 emergency responses this past month, do you have a breakdown in the people? Like, were it, was it homeless folks, the majority? Or is there any type of breakdown there?
Um, I would have to do, what exactly? Are you, are you talking about addresses or types of incidents?
Well, you said there were 164 emergency responses.
Yeah, there's 164 medical emergencies.
Medical emergency responses.
Yes.
Although, how many were for homeless folks?
Okay, I can check on that. So that's your specific, you want to know how many were homeless?
Yes, because obviously, that's a huge problem here in Kani'oe. And for everyone statewide.
Yeah, it definitely is. So I'll have to go back, I'll have to go back and review those 164 to determine which ones were homeless.
Understood.
And I'll get, I'll get that back with next month's neighborhood board.
If you can, if you can put your, there's a, there's a sign-in over there, isn't there, Spencer? If you just put your name on the sign-in, we'll make sure we can email it to you. Okay?
Yeah.
You're welcome. Any other questions for the Fire Department? Thank you very much. See you next month.
Okay, thank you. Have a good evening.
And if, are you still there? If you want to send me those responses before the next month's meeting, I'll be able to send it to the folks that were asking. Thank you. Uh, next is Honolulu Police Department.
Good evening, Board and audience members. I'm Lieutenant Safford Yu with the Kani'oe Police Department. I'll present the stats for you. Crime is very much down. Motor vehicle thefts dropped from five to three. Burglaries dropped from three to zero. Thefts dropped from 13 to nine. Motor vehicle break-ins dropped from seven to zero. However, there was one robbery. I'll be willing to answer any questions at this time.
Questions from the board? Mr. Sakamoto?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the report, HPD. A question is, last year and the year before, there were robberies or break-ins. I think it was February 2022. Somebody broke into R&amp;L and, I think, Kenwa. And I didn't hear anything back after that. There was a shooting at Teksacoa, at Windward City Shopping Center in March of 2020, 23. I believe they apprehended that person, but not too sure what happened with the case. Then on July 22, 2023, Little Caesars was robbed, armed robbery, two gentlemen, well, not gentlemen, but people, guys came in there and robbed them, took their money. Like to know if there's an update on that? And then recently, in November 23, 2023, Windward City Shopping Center smashed doors, windows, doors, and registers being stolen. Can we get an update later on on how's the progress with the investigation? That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Sakamoto, you gave me a bunch of dates, and some are kind of quite far back, 2022. Is there something specific you want me to answer for you? I don't quite understand your question.
Well, since 2022, it seems like the same MO for the 2023, 2023 November. Is, I want to know if it's the same characters?
No, it's not.
It's not? Okay, and how's the investigation with Little Caesars and the shooting at Teksacoa?
Um, I'm gonna have to check on that. And I don't know if I can give you any details as far as that, if the investigation is ongoing.
Okay, just wanted to know. Thank you.
Any other questions for the Honolulu Police Department? Did you, did you find that there was a decrease in fireworks this year?
Honestly, probably not. Because I was off that night, but it never seems to go down, you know? As far as, as far as my opinion.
I had just seen that there was two containers. I think the number was 15 million pounds of fireworks that were, that might be a lot.
Honestly, that's, that's a drop in the bucket.
Okay.
Honestly, it's a drop in the bucket.
Well, my next question following up to that wouldn't be to you. It'll be to the legislators. So I'll hold off on that one.
Okay.
Any other questions for the police? Mahalo.
Good night.
Next, Marine Corps Base Hawaii.
All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to 2024. It's good to see you all again after a little bit of a layoff. So for those that I haven't met, I'm Colonel Bevan, the commanding officer at Marine Corps Base Hawaii. And for this evening, I just wanted to highlight that there's about a week left in the comment period for a ground modernization EA. All those documents are posted on the website, as well as the link to where you can comment. And so I want to make sure everybody's aware that that comment period closes on the 25th, so you have about another week left. I'm sorry, by all means, please get in there, take a look at the products, and, and give us your feedback so we can incorporate that as we move forward. So I appreciate that. Unfortunately, I'm just getting back on island late into the night from the continent, so I can't stay for the entirety of tonight's evening. But Ms. Kristi Kalahiva will be here. So if there's something, a question or something that comes up later on in the meeting after I depart, by all means, please pass it, and Ms. Kristi will take it down and, and get it back to me. But the key thing, again, as I mentioned, is that ground modernization EA, and we welcome your feedback. I'm gonna turn it over to Kristi.
Hi, aloha. Good evening, Board, members of the community. My name is Kristi Kalahiva, and we are from Marine Corps Base Hawaii. So I'd like to share a couple of positive things that have occurred yesterday. Senator Ko'olole may touch on it if he's on later on or Jules. But yesterday, at the opening of the Capitol, he, Senator Ko'olole, announced the partnership that Nupia Pond, which is located on Marine Corps Base Hawaii, and Pai'oi'i'a and the community have collaborative MOU announced it on the floor, looking forward and using the Marine Corps bases as a way forward for other installations to work a collaborative group for other restoration projects. And if there's any questions about that, please ask. I'm, Senator will probably speak more on it. But another thing that I wanted to share, the National Fish and Wildlife awarded, and the National Coastal Resiliency Fund, presented through the readiness and environment protection with the REPI program. So all of these different organizations through the National Wildlife Fund presented the NER, the National Estuary here in Kani'oe, working with Kako'o'i'i'a, Pai'oi'i'a, Noah, $5.5 million that will go for coastal resi- resi- resiliency. Sorry, too many acronyms and long, long descriptions. But this funding will go to support the efforts that the NER program is doing. And these organizations, if you folks aren't aware, you guys know Pai'oi'i'a and Kako'o'i'i'a and Coconut Island, H-I-M-B. They, they work and they partner together, and they employ. Kako'o'i'i'a has 30 employees that work on the farm, who are all continuing their education, their higher education in degrees that are connected to environmental stewardship. So some of them are continuing, they're working, and continuing their bachelor's and their master's degree. This money goes to help to support that, as well as the continued efforts for that coastal resiliency. It's an awesome opportunity. Any questions or anything, just please ask. But that's all I have. Very much.
Any questions for Marine Corps Base Hawaii? Mr. Sakamoto?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the report for Marine Corps Base Hawaii. A question is, first question, there was a crash in Japan, Osprey, the Air Force, and then that was on December 6 of last year. Can you give an update, how's that progressing in the continuation of using these aircraft? And then how's Marine Corps Base Gasoline's on Mukapu? Is it open yet?
Right, so with the aircraft, that was a Air Force aircraft. Of course, the Marine Corps does also have B-22s as well. I think it's the mishap we're talking about. We're still waiting for results of the investigation. And of course, you know, as you know, there was a cessation of operations of the aircraft until they come to some sort of resolution conclusion. So of course, that's why you haven't seen the flight operations from RV-22s. And we'll first wait till we're authorized operations again. But we're kind of waiting, as are all the services who fly the 22s, until guidance comes down from pilot on that. Another question was, the gasoline's on? Yes, they're not open yet. And I think as we chatted about, maybe not the last neighborhood, but the previous one, part of it was funding and replacing the tanks that were there, and part of it is looking at our, at our posture. So as we transition to electric vehicles, which you know is coming in the future, you know, we're probably selling less gasoline. And so we had taken out some tanks, and we're not putting quite as many back in. But the work is progressing. I don't have a timeline on that. But yes, hopefully, here in the future. But that's part of our, as we look at the base and transition to electric vehicles, how we modernize our grid structure to be able to support, you know, that transition away from fossil fuels. So it's all part of it.
Thank you, Major.
Any other questions for Marine Corps Base Hawaii? I just have a comment. I took a boat out, and I, I just wanted to compliment MCCS on the security of the boats that are out there patrolling and making sure people don't hit patch reefs, know the directions back. So they're out there in force when it's about a half an hour before the boats are supposed to be back in and on the way out there. And I think that was a good move on MCCS's part to, to have that security. I wish the, the state DAR would do the same thing.
No, thank you for the feedback. I appreciate it. And we're always constantly looking to see how we can improve our posture and to make sure that we are being good stewards of the resources that are here. It's the right thing to do. So thank you for the feedback. And I'll make sure, you know, Beverly or MCCS Director, there's us. Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you very much. Next up is Hawaii State Hospital. Anybody here from Hawaii State Hospital? All right. Moving into board briefs, the first brief that we have today is the Windward Kahale. We have a 10-minute brief, which will include some Q and A at the end. So if you'd like to get yourself set up, and John, are you gonna be doing it? Okay, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for having us. We've got Dara, who's the operator of the Kahale, and we've got Chemo, who is the developer. One of the questions that we've been getting from the community has been the why. Why will you be building a Kahale in the Windward area? The response to that is that there's an expressed need. There's a lot of homeless in the Windward area. Statistics show that 90% of the homeless in the Windward area are from this area, not from mainland, not from Whanau, not from Hawaii Kai. There's a need to help your homeless in this area. That's the why. Going to go in a little deeper detail, but I would like to bring up Chemo, who is a developer. He's got, he will give you background of his 10 years' experience in developing Kahales and the, the people that he served. And there was a question two nights ago at the community meeting at the Kahale that said, "Bruh, why don't you put it in your backyard? I don't see one in Kalihii." So to answer that, and, and I apologize, I probably should have had my A-game, but I wasn't thinking, there is a Kahale in my district, in my backyard, near my home. It's on Wilson Street, and it's the vet house. And they have done a great job at patrolling the area, picking up litter. They've been great neighbors. They have enhanced Wilson Track. So yes, we have a Kahale where I live, and we appreciate them. I'm gonna turn it over to Chemo. He's gonna give you a little bit of his institutionalized knowledge on development and, and Kahales and how it's helped homeless. Chemo?
Aloha, everyone. Chemo Carvalho from Home made Hawaii. I'll keep my comments very brief. In the last decade, I've been fortunate to develop 15 communities across the state. It's provided over 540 beds annually to our system. And it's very clear, when we build homes, we reduce homelessness, and it enhances and improves communities. For Kahale, I think for every community that we've developed, personally, I've seen these communities transform, and they've improved these communities that they're built in. For Kahawiki Village, for example, we've actually saved Pu'u Halei Elementary School. It was one of several schools that was slated to be shut down. It actually added kids to the desks. It improved the classrooms. It's actually stimulated economic development in the area. It's improved businesses such as restaurants and grocery stores and medical centers. When we look at the Tutu Birds Homes in Kailua, in Kalihii, and in Webanalo, these communities, it's actually brought neighborhoods together. People are actually connected. They're becoming friends. We look at Hale' Malioa at Sand Island. It's actually helped enhance the security of the DLNR boat dock, which actually has improved and helped the Hokulea crew, and it's actually created a safe community for that area. We look at, as John mentioned, the Veterans Home in Kalihii. As he mentioned, the Veterans actually takes care of the roads. They adopt the highway. They create clean landscaping. That's actually been the same case for Kama'ou' in Kalagula. And so I guess the message here is that, you know, they do this because they know that it's a kuli'ana, that if they are being taken care of, then they should also care for the communities that are welcoming them. And so my message here tonight is very clear, it's very simple. We build homes, we reduce homelessness, and we improve communities. I have never seen a community or a village that we have developed that has actually caused more harm, it's increased crime. And so my hope is that, and my expectation, is that the residence actually enhances your community similarly, and that you actually are proud of the impact that's taking place in this.
Thank you, Chemo. Another question that came up, Mr. Chairman and Board members, the who? Who will be in this Kahale? Attached to that are questions about safety and security. Before I turn it over to Dara, who will be the operator, who will be able to answer those questions, I wanted to provide a statement from Dr. Michael Champion. He is our medical expert on some of the residents, for the residents of the Kahale. In his quote, he says, "Safety is first. Disruptive behavior will not be accepted." So that's, again, Dr. Michael Champion, part of our team. I'm gonna turn it over to Dara, again, who's the operator. She will be explaining the intake process, the who, the safety and security. Thank you.
Oh, my Kako'o. Aloha. My name is Dara Kohane. I'm the executive director of Project Vision Hawaii. And over the last few weeks that we've been engaged with the community, we've been hearing your concerns. And as the organization that will be running this Kahale, we're taking those considerations into the process as we develop what that intake will look like and what the operations will look like. I want to answer the questions about who will be at this Kahale. So primary focus for this location are Windward residents. And so just as we did today, our housing director and his team went out with IHS and St. Anne's, and then Windward Health Center today for some outreach, and looked through and met the individuals who are living right here on this street. Of, of the folks that they met today, over 30, they identified a handful of individuals who would be good fits for this, this Kahale. Others that we are engaging with right now are hardworking individuals who work in the area but live in their cars. They will be given priority. Also, some students that are unhoused, hardworking students, that are, you know, struggling to pay for tuition, wanting to better themselves in their education, they will be given priority as well. So we're trying to understand the need of the Kani'oe area, the need of the Windward area. From our amazing partners, IHS, who you folks know are the homeless service provider for this district, they let us know that there are about 300 unhoused individuals living on the streets in the Windward area. Of that, Kani'oe has about half of those. So there is absolutely a need that we all see for services and for housing. To us, housing is healthcare, right? So once we provide that housing, that safe space, the three meals a day, a warm bed to sleep in, and compassionate folks around them, we believe that we can help get them onto the next step of their journey. And so we ask for the community's grace as we work to build an intake process that, again, prioritizes safety. That is our number one. Safety for the keiki that are in the area, safety for the families that are in the area, safety for also the other residents who will be living in the Kahale, and our own staff that will be there, many of whom have been unhoused in their lifetime. So we wanted to express that safety is absolutely our primary concern. We will not accept those who will be disruptive to the community, and we'll work very closely with our partner organizations, especially Windward Health Center and IHS, who have detox programs, who have mental illness programs, will be able to refer individuals who are not suitable for this Kahale to a better fit for them. So appreciate everyone allowing us to share a little bit more about our intake process and who exactly we will be helping. Thank you.
Thank you, Dara. Another question we had was ongoing engagement. Will you be connected with the community? The answer is yes. We do have a representative from the Governor's Office at your neighborhood board meeting every month. We'll stay in contact with that person. In addition, we'll be working with the area legislators. Kathleen will even be a connector for some of the meetings, possible meetings. Sorry to put you on the spot in the future. But yes, there will be ongoing engagement and meetings, and we will stay connected. Before, there was another question from this group that regarded, in regard to, in regards to, I'm sorry, contact. They wanted one contact. And Dara, I believe we're gonna, I'm gonna turn it over to you for the contact.
I'm hearing the concerns and the feedback that we've gotten over the last few weeks from the community that's been very valuable. So we appreciate your manao as we grow into this space to be good neighbors with you. We will be establishing a number that anyone can call if there are any issues in the area. Right now, we're utilizing kahale@projectvisionhawaii.org. That's our email for all of our housing projects with the Governor's Office. We'll also be able to publish that number that will be utilized for the staff that are 24/7 on site as well. But we want to hear the feedback, and we want this to be, again, something that the community takes on together. And so we welcome and hope for that feedback so we can make it as positive of a program as possible.
Mr. Chairman, before we take questions, could I turn it over to Brandon with Suda, who helped with the, we went door-to-door this past Saturday. A number of area residents were upset about an abandoned vehicle. And the meeting we had with the community two nights ago, the same issue came up. And so we wanted to let your board members know that we did work on it. Brandon, if you can just share what happened?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the board. While doing outreach to the Castle Hills community, we found out that they were very concerned with an abandoned and burnt-out white Toyota Camry that was there, and they wanted us to have it towed and removed as soon as possible. The Office of the Governor made an official request, the city's abandoned vehicle section, and worked with the police department to remove the vehicle and clean up the broken car parts in the area. We would like to thank the beat officers that responded so quickly to our calls and helped us remove the vehicle to make this area safer for all. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we're ready for your questions.
Okay, well, thank you very much for that information. I had the opportunity to sit in on two of those meetings so far, and this will be the third, although I wasn't able to stay for the full time of the first meeting and the meeting at the beginning of this week seemed to get real windy and wet. But I do appreciate the, the effort that the, of the Governor's Office, and I appreciate the effort of the contractor. the effort of the contractor to, all this, to make it work. I've got a bunch of questions I've written down, but I'm gonna ask the board first and then the community next if there are any questions. So, I see Mr. Sakamoto's hand, Vice Chair Lamb, Secretary Burbage, goodness, Dave, we'll go in that order. Off you go.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, John and Brandon and Dara and the other gentleman too. I went to there on Tuesday. It was a windy evening, but thank you for having the open house. And I testified about accessway for the disabled. I'm a disabled person. There was a subject brought up about sidewalks and I brought up the public transportation, if you have anything there. Well, my concern is, when did you notify the local and state representatives about this project? How is this project being funded? Is it through grants from federal and state, et cetera? And then, basically, what is your projected timeline for this project to be in existence? Is it five years or more than five years? Can you elaborate? Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Sakamoto, five years, five years. And yes, I believe we notified the area lawmakers on January 3rd. That was our first meeting, the walkthrough. Funded, I believe, and I want to be correct, by money? I just want to make sure. I just, because it's Kahale monies that we use for this Kahale. Thank you, Representative Kitagawa. And as far as ADA compliant, I think maybe, can I turn it over to Kimo?
Absolutely. For every facility, 10% of all the dwellings have to be ADA compliant. So, in this case, we do have a couple of units that do have ramps. We also have ADA accessible restrooms, shower, sink, toilet, and then for accessibility for the transportation access points, those are also considered in our design and development of this.
Next, Vice Chair. And then Laura next after.
Thank you for all your effort in helping those who are less fortunate and really applaud your effort to do that and coordination or putting that together. And I'm familiar with Project Vision and glad that you're continuing the community work, doing that kind of work. I think I have my comments and question in two parts. One is first your metrics and figure out why Windward side. We do see, we have homeless around here. They're part of our community, but a lot of them are under the bridge. They're in the mountains and they go where they want to go. You know, it's not that we don't, it's, we know them, we see them around and we also keep track of them too. But the other part is just construction of this, essentially it's tiny homes, right? And tiny homes in a park. And I think that's one of those things I like to ask not just you, but the leadership, policymakers. Isn't that a trailer park? Isn't that something that people have tried to get rid of here in Hawaii? And I like to challenge that concept because I think tiny homes has been a movement around the country. They're different. They're not just the same cookie cutter. They're not trailer parks anymore. They're very aesthetic. They have architecture with it. Can you help the policy to make it available for more people to do that? So, we don't have to put it in communities and homes, but that local families can help develop their own property. Because, you know, if you have a half acre, quarter acre, we don't have 300,000, 400,000 to build a new home or tear it down and build something new. But maybe there's something, a project like this, something they can put in their homes and add to that. So, thanks.
Mr. Vice Chair, very good question. I think you're leading some ADUs, perhaps dwelling units?
Not just ADUs, but just helping families be able to even just start with a tiny home or something like that.
That completely makes sense. And I believe Dara may have covered it. We've got a couple of college students in the windward area, we don't want to identify who they are, that are houseless. They may avail of this Kahale. We have a person who's worked in the windward area who is houseless. It would be a good opportunity to have him as a candidate to live in that Kahale. So, your thoughts are on point. May I turn it over to the developer, Kimo?
It's an excellent conversation. Technically, there is no code for tiny homes here in the state of Hawaii. And these homes were actually developed under our emergency proclamation on homelessness. And Governor has asked me personally that as we go through this process, when we, we never compromise on health, safety, culture, and environment. We always make sure that we're justifying our decisions. And as we're justifying those decisions, we want to make sure that we're learning from these developments, that it actually informs a future redevelopment of our building code. But to your point, you know, a lot of these units that I'm building, we of course make sure that they're aesthetically connected to the areas that we're in. That's why we stick build them. But a lot of that, this is how Hawaii was built. Before our agriculture economy, we had these type of tiny home units. We, a lot of you who are, you know, have ancestors from, you know, the Japanese communities and Chinese communities, Filipino communities, this is how they built their families, they built communities and culture, and they developed our agriculture community here in Hawaii. And so, a lot of the lands actually used to have these developments and dwellings on them. So, part of Kahale and our Kahale initiative is to reclaim that sense of connection and to our past. And so, you know, I hope that this is a learning opportunity for the state or our building code so that we can actually expand it into a lot of people who just need the starter up home, like the college students, like others who really need that sense of affordability. You can't infuse the market with more affordable housing. You have to make housing more affordable. That's how you pass on the affordability to the client and that's what we're doing right now.
Yeah, thanks. I think just so that we can, it's lessons learned for our broader communities, not just the government effort, but it's all our citizens can benefit from that. Thank you.
Laura?
Hi. Thank you for this project and I'm a little bit confused about, I think it's Pula Ma'ola was the name of the medical respite? Is that what it was called? And I thought we were trying to duplicate something like that so that you didn't have the, you know, endless circle of a person coming out who's homeless, coming out of the emergency hospital and then going into the medical respite, I mean, and being helped by that. You didn't have that, you're trying to break that cycle of coming out, going back on the street, coming back into the emergency room and round and round and round, right? So, this is a different, a whole different other type of help for the homeless, correct?
Could I answer that?
Yeah.
And I'm gonna have Dara jump in as she is the operator. The answer is partially yes. So, let me use myself as an example. I'm the guy with a mental condition and a drug addiction. I go to Queen's Hospital once a week. I'm called a frequent liar. That's the term they use. I can cost up to $1 million in unnecessary medical visits. If I stay in acute care bed space one night, it's gonna cost Queens and taxpayers $3,900. Now, hypothetically, and I talked to Dr. Champion about this, then all of a sudden I steal a can of Pepsi, put it in my pocket, walk out grocery store, get caught, go to the judge. I do not understand the wrongfulness of my conduct. I'm now placed in the state hospital. Every day I'm there, it's $1,000. Going into eight months, I finally realized, yeah, I made a mistake. I stole soda. That is wrong. Go before the judge. He now realizes, I understand what I did. He lets me go. That eight months will cost state taxpayers over $200,000. This Kahale, where we have it at, I'm a nonviolent offender. Got in trouble. It would better fit me to be there than at the state hospital costing $200,000 when I can cost as little as $80 to $100 a day. So, if I'm not a violent offender and I made a mistake like that and I'm trying to get my bearings, we have wraparound services which will help me get better eventually. Hopefully, maybe six months, eight months, maybe a year or two, I become confident. I get self, I'm more self-sufficient. I get a part-time job. Possibly, I move out to permanent support housing. So, yes, it could still cover a person or that medical model, but we loosened up a little bit the focus on windward homeless. So, they might not need the services like I might need, being duly diagnosed. Again, it could be the working homeless, the college students that live in the area that are houseless. But I think Dara will be able to give a better answer because she's the operator. Dara?
John answered the question for the most part. We, so this is a different project than Pula Ma'ola, but we're taking what we learned from that pilot project as well. We want to be open to the needs of those within the windward community, including maybe those who come out of Castle Dennis Hospital, for example, that we're discussing what that referral process might look like. That is a wider community for the whole island and for the state, for any of those providers that do give medical respite so that we can avoid folks going from the hospitals to the streets. So, yes, that will be a consideration for folks that could be taken into this space, but we also saw that the needs of the Kaneohe homeless population required us to be a little bit more loose, as John said, in terms of accepting the folks that are here, the 300 individuals who are living on the streets now. And many of those, like you said, are not coming out of the hospitals. They're already within the community. And so, we want to be open to addressing their needs as well.
So, will you have a timeline for a person coming in and exiting? You've got like six months and then if you don't show some kind of improvement according to a criteria that you have, then you're out and we're bringing somebody else in? Or what does that look like?
We're still developing that, so appreciate any feedback on that process. We want to be, again, flexible to the needs of the individuals. So, we will have a medical side and social service side that will analyze the needs of the individuals that we're considering and the individuals who are living, residing at the Kahale. We do have a step-down program for those who do become more independent and self-sufficient that are ready to move into more transitional supportive housing instead. So, that will be our goal is when folks are ready, they will move on to the next step in phases.
And then, why five years? How did that come about? Are you gonna build it and then break it down to five years?
If we can, if it's successful, proof of concept, proof of concept. If we can prove that it's working, and again, for the duly diagnosed person like me that might cost a million dollars or over $200,000 at the state hospital, it could save the state a lot of money. And if it's working, why not more than five years? But again, at least that gives us a timeline to show that it's worthy. But thank you. Kimo wanted to say something.
Okay, we're running out of time. So, I haven't even gotten to the community yet. So, Keone, one question?
Okay, so I had to go through all my questions for just one. But luckily Laura asked one that I was actually gonna ask. But my one question then would be, you mentioned, you know, you're gonna evaluate if these currently houseless are acceptable. So, I'm curious to know how you guys are deciding who is acceptable and who is not.
Right now, we're developing a comprehensive assessment that will, again, look at the medical side. So, we have our medical director and our medical team that are assessing them from a behavioral health standpoint, their independence level, and also from our social services side, our social workers and our outreach workers who have those relationships with folks and really know their behaviors. And so, looking at how we can support them with what types of programs. So, at this space, it'll be a space for those that are hardworking individuals that maybe have, you know, lesser, that are easier to house as we start this program and develop it. For those that have a higher medical need, for example, those that are experiencing severe mental illness or those who are going through substance use, we might refer to our partners at IHS or at other programs that we coordinate with often. So, this will be looking at those individuals, again, the needs of those that are especially living in the bushes across from the Kahale space right now anyway, looking at those individuals and trying to address their needs with those wraparound services.
Thank you. A lot of my questions that I had were answered. Probably Laura and then again Keone, yours. Basically, the question, and you probably have heard this before, but what does success look like? I don't want an answer to that because you said you're still developing it. But I think it's important that those things be developed sooner rather than later because there are other Kahalae's that have had results. So, knowing what success looks like is important for the community to know. So, those are metrics that you base your success on and the community can also base those results. My other final question, well, sorry, I told you you only had one, but I've got three. When does it open?
Right now, we are actually still finalizing our development. So, we still have to turn on water, turn on electric. So, you know, I think that's a moving target. We're also listening to the community and we're adapting at the moment, but I think until that is done, I cannot turn over a facility to the operator and that's a negotiable date. So, it will not be any time in the very, very near moment, but as soon as I can.
And finally, this is a pretty responsive board and we understand what's going on in the community. And had you consulted this board, I'm sure you would have had a lot of support and help with things that you're working on now. That's really a comment, not a question. All right, any other questions? Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take just a few. And I see one hand right there with, yes, the lovely lady, yes. And just very short, please.
They said they notified January 3rd. Is this the same houses that was at Punch Bowl Street that was moved to Kaneohe?
That's a good question. Are these the same houses that were at Punch Bowl?
No, we moved that to a different location. And so, again, this is a different population. This is a whole different community. It is not the relocation of a medical respite Kahale to this site. Completely different situation.
Thank you.
When did you start the process of moving this housing unit into Kaneohe without? Because my grandchild goes to the school that's right next to the property. We left for winter break. There was nothing over there. We come back from school, all the houses are up there. We had no notice. When were you gonna notify us? We found out when we returned from school.
Chair, could we have the name of the new member?
Arby.
I'm sorry? It's okay, just walk over to Spencer and give him your name. So, right there, that gentleman right there in the green shirt.
Mr. Chairman, to answer your question, a lot of that is on me, my fault, but also on my team. As I transitioned in, we neglected to, rightfully so, communicate this. If we had to do this again, we'd probably do everything we did a month sooner, everything. So, again, it's on me and my team. We apologize. It's on us. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And?
Where's the security gonna come for the kids that are across the street because the property has no fencing, no anything? Who's gonna protect the children?
The property does have fencing and the...
I'm talking about the school. There's a gate on the backside of that property. I know they put up vinyl fencing, but there's still a gate. What about the kids on the outside of the street?
There's the security, if that's okay. We will have three staff onsite at all time, at least three. One will be a guard card security who's been trained in mental health and de-escalation. We've just started installing the security cameras and have been working with Hakipu'u to install cameras for their visualization as well. We've added additional cameras so that there is increased frequency, sorry, increased security for this school. We've also offered to, we've been working with the Po'o to add in lights that are sensor lights and we hope that that will be part of the added security in the area. Our security guards will be making rounds every half hour, not only within our space, our campus, but also on both roads, on Po'okela and Ala Ko'olau. They'll be including in their rounds to go actually around the entire school to make sure that we're keeping that space safe. Our residents will also be forming their own security group so that they can be part of the neighborhood watch as well. So, we definitely hear your concerns. We understand and I assure you that the safety of the kids is absolutely a priority for us.
Thank you. There was one... There was one hand in the... Was that you? Was it from, was that? Sure.
I just wanted to add to the security response because I think security is pretty much the most important thing that residents are worried about. I really appreciate the added security for the Kahali, but I think we're all kind of concerned too about the spillover that we saw happening at the Queens one too. So hopefully the security will take care of that. The concern that was raised to me was the safety of the students going to Hakipu'u, going to the bus stop every day. So I've actually asked ILWU, some pretty big guys, to be stationed at the bus stop in the morning and the afternoon. Kids are coming to and fro of school to add a little bit more oversight and security to the area. So they'll be helping out for at least the first month, and hopefully that's successful. We can continue that as well. This is helping out.
Thank you.
Jennifer, I'm a Castle Hills community resident, and I understand today's constraints. First thing I want to say is that I do, what I just said. I care about the community, and I said that when I was there Tuesday night. So we got flyers on our boards over the three-day weekend. I wasn't home. The first meeting where that opened house at Kahali was at 5:00. I worked in town. I arrived late. It was rainwater. It was hard to hear and it was hard to concentrate. This was, this is the only venue that we have to ask questions because it wasn't clear. That night, it was more celebratory and acknowledgement about the accomplishment, which I can appreciate. But as you heard tonight, the intake process, the security, all of those things are unclear. And my neighbor was told that the facility may open just weeks from now. The question was asked during the meeting. Will there be sex offenders there? Will there be a violent population? The answer wasn't clear. And so, in the interest of time, I would just ask that you have, that you set a meeting for the community in a place like this where it's not raining. Give us a presentation. Help us understand what the other Kahalas did and talk about how the benefits were achieved because I want to support the project.
Okay. Thank you. So yes, we faced that question two nights ago. So the question about sex offenders, the answer was no. I'll repeat it so everybody can hear. The answer is no. I'm going to repeat what Dr. Michael Champion said. Safety is first. Disruptive behavior will not be accepted at this Kahali. Can I turn it over to Dara to maybe address any other safety concerns?
Sure. And let me just add in, when I heard Dr. Champion say that there was going to be intensive vetting process, he never did say what that process was. So in response to what the young lady was bringing up, it's, I know it's not completely cooked yet, but as it gets cooked, I think the community should be notified, and I like the idea of another meeting. And I just want to make sure, if we're going to have a lineup of people coming, let's make sure that the questions are different, so we're not re-asking the same thing and re-answering the same thing. Off you go.
Hi, I'm actually a Kumu at Hakipu'u Academy. My name is Tiffany Shelton. I'm here on behalf of the students and their concerns and trying to give them a voice. I just like, we have the same concerns as all the community members that have been speaking up about it, about sex offenders, the date when it's open, the safety, the security. We were told that it would be open in February, and we just found out right when we came back from winter break, and we were all shocked and confused, and we didn't know what was going on. The students have come together and they are petitioning for a later opening date in the summer after they're gone in order for us as a school to better prepare and for you guys to finish your development or whatever you need to do to get right. If you don't mind, I'd just like to read a letter if we have time.
No. But if you do have a letter, I'd sure like you to give it to the board.
Yes.
And I'll make sure I will circulate it to this team and the entire board.
Yes, thank you.
Is your contact information on there?
Yes, my contact information. And I also did the sign-in sheet.
Can I see it, please? Please go next.
Aloha mai kaua, everybody. My name is Kaweh Mahoe. I live in Nanakuli, but my daughter goes to the school at Hakipu'u Academy. So, first of all, I'd like to specifically request another meeting, not next month, but in two to three weeks. If we can have this meeting, especially about this thing that we're talking about tonight. This is an official request. Seems that everything is developing. Yeah, there's no answers for anything. There's no answers for concerns. And like she said, we went away from Christmas break, came back, and this thing was already built. There was no community input. You guys, obviously, you just said, never even have the opportunity to know about this. So the answer to that is the emergency declaration of homelessness. But background checks. If these people getting three meals a day, we struggle with even feeding our kids lunch. If maybe the state can come up with some money to help our kids have 60 more additional lunch menus so that right across the street, and this is our goal. Initially, it was negative. But we get community kids that bounce and transition from exactly something like when Kahali and Wa Manalo and Antibranca is placed. You get like a working, successful Ma'atua. That's an example of how for transition people out of homelessness. They have success, and it's a great example of how to be. Say, 300 people. So we get plenty of questions. That's why we need to have another meeting in two to three weeks so that you guys can have answers for all of these questions that every single person in the community, we keep hearing. Oh, that's getting developed.
How about we just put this on the agenda for our next neighborhood board meeting? It's not three weeks, it's four weeks. It'll be the third Thursday in February here.
The message that we got was that the thing was going to open already in February, and there's no answer. Now, even our school, we get unpermitted, we get two unpermitted buildings. We got a problem hooking up water and electric. Can we get permission to make our buildings electric and water? Rather, like do some community service, help us hook up our buildings. The community future, to me, outweighs the potential fixing of the adults. What can happen in the future if we don't concentrate on the kids? We potentially setting them up for B right in one Kahali. The security isn't super, I got changed my position from being one Kumu, so now I got a road to school. So that eliminates me now from educating the kids, which is why I there. If something happened, am I void from getting prosecuted if I protect my kids hurting somebody? No! So can we please, part of you guys' plan, come up with one extra security guard during a day that can help our kids? Because it shouldn't be my job as an adult, as a parent, and as a Kumu. This kind of stuff got to be way before. Had one RFP, right? All of this kind of stuff supposed to have happened. So for these guys to tell us that. Long before this was built, plans wasn't set. And WCC, Kina Malka, and the state hospital was mentioned. The video of the drone, I mean, our school's right across the street, eight feet across, that road is eight feet across. Thank you for moving the gates aside. We get major concerns, so if you can put them on the agenda, that'd be awesome. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Hi.
Aloha, my name is Kathleen Miriam, and I operate the Mental Health Center for this whole Windward side. Just wanted to add that a lot of us have been asking for this sort of place. And so, you know, the idea of keep putting it off, I think having a forum, a meeting for more information is always great. Anytime to talk about mental health and substance use is great. But some of us have been waiting for something like that. Our center treats people with mental health conditions, and the people that are homeless, they're not able to really take advantage of the treatment because, first of all, they lose their medications. Their medications get lost because they're going from woods to woods, different areas. They're not able to really take part in their treatment in terms of having therapy or case management because they don't have the basics. They don't have a home, a tiny house. This whole concept is proven to be very effective. So, you know, we weren't able to welcome all of you the way we would have liked to because we're a very welcoming community here on the Windward side, but it's here. And I think we have an opportunity to really help build it and make it stronger. And again, these are our people. They're our brothers and sisters. They're not other people or them. They are us. So I'm really eager, I'm thankful, and I know of some people that need that tiny house. So thank you.
Last comment.
Jalen Charageloff, I'm a resident of Kanihoe, but specifically a resident of Castle Hills, which is where Kahali sits, the foot of our neighborhood. And, you know, I don't want to discredit all the manpower and resources that went into addressing the systemic issue. It's challenging. I get that. I want to see this be successful. I want our community to improve. But there was no transparency, and so I want to go on record and beat that dead horse that basically we weren't informed as a community. We were told the day of to be home because they were going to survey. We were told to show up two days later, which disrupts our quality of life to come to an open house that had no answers. And we still don't have the answers we're looking for, so I do also want to have that additional meeting. We acknowledge the, and thank you guys for taking care of an abandoned car there. But we need transparency in order to support this program, and the program is only going to be as good and successful as the community around it that supports it. But with clandestine operations, as what went down, it's hard to gain trust back from our community if you lose our trust. So, you know, I think we are willing and open to work with you all, but we have to also be given the opportunity to address our, have you all address our concerns. And it matters because, like I said, that program is not going to be successful if the community around it does not embrace it. And I stand by that. What we heard so far is how much resources went into making this happen. But we have not been told what to expect. What are the safety protocols? What are the specific things that ensure, that make me and my family feel safe? This is the only road to leave my driveway. This is the only road that I take my kids to the park. This is the road in which our kids catch the school bus to school. There is no alternate entrance or egress or ingress from our neighborhood. So it is very important, and we were only informed this past Saturday. I want to also share for context for the group and everybody here that there were buildings being built in November, and upon our neighbors going to investigate, hmm, what's going on here? They were told that it was supposed to be hush-hush. It was surreptitiously. It was done probably because of the lack of approval that you would probably get when you bring stuff like this up. But that's not how you gain support. So I don't know how you guys fix this, but I definitely want to see that additional, that meeting. As far as safety, you're saying there's cameras. People still steal packages from front doors if there's a camera. You're going to put Paul Blart, the mall cop, up there? I don't, like, that doesn't make me feel safe. So we need to have that conversation. Thank you so much.
Yes, we have one other comment online. That was the last comment. We got to move on. If you want to share with me afterwards, we can talk, and I'll take your concern up. Does he know he has his hand up?
Is it me? My turn. I'm Officer Atkins with the District Four Community Police and Team. One of our main issues is dealing with homeless issues throughout the district. We'd love to establish a relationship with you guys. If you could be helpful in taking Windward homeless people. If you could provide some contact information, I could provide mine. We'd love to establish a relationship or possibly be in some of your meetings if possible. That's all I got.
That's fabulous. I appreciate that.
Can I answer the officer?
Go ahead, do it.
Yes, we're going to have Dara, Kimo, and Brandon connect with you. We appreciate you, HPD. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Perfect. Okay, thank you very much. Obviously, there's some, there's community concern about this, and we will be putting this on the agenda in our February meeting. And John, I'm hoping that you can feed information back to me about when a potential opening might be. It sounds like if it were pushed a little bit further back, it would benefit the community for the transparency that they're looking for. You're welcome. Next, we have a presentation from Board of Water Supply.
Well, technically, we don't have a presentation. We're just here to answer questions.
You are-
We're happy to come back, but I'd like to introduce our manager and chief engineer, Ernest Lau. I have slides that we can pull up to illustrate any questions the board or the community might have. So thank you, Chair, for your time.
Thank you, everybody. Ernie Lau, Board of Water Supply. Nice to be here tonight. Available for any questions from the board or the community about our water rates?
Could we have a little order here? It's the, Mr. Lau has the floor. If you ever can kind of quiet down with your conversations. Thank you. Sorry, Chair.
Maybe I can just, in the meantime, while questions are being formed, just say that the Board of Water Supply, you know, for most of our customers, we send a bill to 170,000 customers on the island. We have that many accounts. But most of our customers actually have two charges on that water bill from the Board of Water Supply. One is the sewer charge, which actually is a service that we provide for the City Department of Environmental Services. So the money that's collected to pay for the sewer charges goes to a separate city department. For the Board of Water Supply, we have the water charges. And if you're like me, on my water bill at home, about three-quarters of the bill is the sewer charge and one-quarter is the water charge. And for me, it's about 30-something dollars a month. And the rate increases only apply to the water charges, a smaller portion of bill, and not the total bill. We continuously have to clarify that with people and remind them that it's only the water charges. So the rate increases only affect the water charges. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Sakamoto, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Lau, for coming and finally can hear in person. My concern is about the funds that we have for Board of Water Supply. I know you talked about deceleration plans in the near future, a settlement with the Red Hill situation with the Navy. And I just want to know, how would these monies be done to, is it for the infrastructure, the better quality of the water? Especially with more village, there's some contamination. I'd like to see the water much more purified. And what is your goals for the next five to 10 years with the Board of Water Supply upgrades?
Thank you. So the rates increases, the revenue we get from people paying their water bill because Board of Water Supply is financially self-sufficient. Only the water charges on that bill comes to us, and that pays for two things. One is the operation of the water system island-wide. We serve almost a million people every day with safe drinking water. And we have to produce about 145 million gallons a day on average. So that's the operations cost. that's the operations cost. The other big cost is to pay for our infrastructure replacement and renewal projects. So our CIP program. And right now, that's about $200 million a year. The water rates are going to be used, the revenue from that portions of it is going to be used to address about $1.26 billion worth of infrastructure improvement projects island-wide. Just remember, the Board of Water Supply, we have about 2,100, 2,100 miles of pipelines around the island, over 170 water tanks, almost 200 pumping stations around the island that we have to maintain this infrastructure. So a large investment into infrastructure. And in two areas on the infrastructure improvement program, the CIP, two areas that we see a need is continue to replace old pipe and start to focus on even some of the larger pipe that's like 42 inches in diameter and address that. The other part is to address water sources, developing new sources, redoing treatment systems where we have to do treatment, doing monitor wells related to Red Hill. One of the misconceptions that was portrayed, I think, by the media was that the rate increases were needed because of Red Hill. I just want to clarify that. Red Hill projects in our CIP over the next six years is about 6% of the $1.26 billion. So around 76 to 77 million dollars are Red Hill projects, related projects within that six-year window. The rest of it is just what we need to invest in keeping our water system improved. If we don't, we pass that problem to future generations to deal with. I hope I answered your question, sir. Thank you.
Again, thank you very much for coming this evening. I know you were here in October, if I'm not mistaken. And if it would be possible, if you could recite again with the PowerPoint presentation that you have in your hand and how the community can go about viewing it, because that's what you presented.
Oh, okay. Everything is on our website. All the information about our water rates and understanding the reasons why we needed the rate increases to fund the operation and the capital program in the BWS is at www.bordawatersupply.com. So bordawatersupply.com. All that information is on there, including an 11-minute video of the PowerPoint presentation that I won't be doing tonight. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for clarifying that thing about the Red Hill. I think the military gets bad rap a lot of things here on the island. But I guess it's more, I guess, more philosophical, like you said about finding new strategies about getting water. I think we want to see that where water comes from goes back to other people that are using it. But we have a lot of large consumers that are using it. Are we getting them to reinvest or invest into things like desalination, reverse osmosis, things that they can reprocess the water for their own properties as opposed to taking from other areas?
That's a very good question. Thank you for asking that. Because on the Windward water system, there is one customer that accounts for about 20% of the daily use. And that's the Marine Corps Base, Honeyland Marine Corps Base. And I saw the commanding officer here. And I, what we are talking to them and really strongly encouraging them because they also have a golf course on that base, a very nice golf course, and a lot of landscaping, especially as they redo the whole base. We want them to treat their wastewater and reuse it on the base. So the precious, why the drinking water can be used for the rest of the community and not used to just irrigate a golf course. So they are listening to us. And I think they've allocated funding and made that a top priority. We want to encourage them to actually implement upgrades to their wastewater treatment plan so they can reuse the wastewater irrigation. And that's it. And we are also reaching out to the largest water customers in the Board of Water Supply system to encourage them to do water conservation. And as part of our efforts too, I just want to announce that, you know, we have a rebates for water conservation for commercial customers, but also residential customers. And for residential customers, we are going to be doubling the rebate for old toilet replacements. So everybody has toilets in their home and everybody has to use them. But we want to have them replace and encourage them to replace inefficient, high-water-using toilets with high-efficiency toilets that use less water per flush. And that $100 rebate is going to be open for a three-month period. Kathleen, do you remember what were the dates on that? Oh, okay.
Actually, we're announcing it at the building improvement, the home improvement show at the Blaze Dell this weekend. So the promotion starts January 19th, which is tomorrow, and one will run through April 19th. So we really encourage everybody to, it's a great time. If you've got old toilets, it's the time to replace them. $100 is really good. And we've gotten some additional funding through some grants to help with us. Thank you.
So that's an opportunity. And also, one of the things we see, you know, the way our water rates are structured is that we want to give our customers, especially our residential customers, the ability to control their bill by water conservation. So more rebates. And we have a program that we're going to be starting out very shortly, beginning, I think, on the Leeward Coast. It's a Kupuna Outreach Program, Kupuna Water Conservation Program, who actually do water audits, where the Kupuna will let us come into their home, do water audits and look for leaks, look for opportunities to install more water-efficient devices within their home to help them save money and save water.
Has Board of Water Supply considered other sources of revenue, like public access to some of the public lands that you oversee? Right now, quite a lot of money is spent on security to prevent people walking on those public lands.
Yeah. You know, unfortunately, a lot of our public lands are up Maoka, in the watershed areas. So most of those lands, we actually don't want to hurt more people because, like Wahea Valley, we own the watershed in that valley, the Maoka, above the end of Wahea Road after the city land. There's Wahea Tunnel. Wahea Tunnel is one of our largest tunnel sources serving the Kanioehe, Kaileua, Waimanalo community. So we don't want people to go up there and take their dogs and do other things up there that could contaminate water. So a lot of our lands are actually not suitable for development. But we are looking at opportunities. And, you know, we did look at our property on Baritania, see if we wanted to redevelop it. We actually issued an RFP to look at redevelopment opportunities, you know, maybe working with Queen's Hospital or others to develop healthcare facilities on our property and kind of lease it from us and make improvements. Unfortunately, that kind of fell through. We're kind of rethinking it at this stage. But, but thank you. We are looking for sources for federal funds. It's been, it's very clear to me that going back to our rate pairs for revenue to just keep this massive infrastructure going is not really sustainable over time, that we need to be more skillful, more active in finding federal funding opportunities in different federal agencies and start to leverage those funds to the benefit of our customers.
So, first comment, just mahalo for all the work that you're doing with Red Hill and everything. It's always Ernie for Governor. And then, but I also wanted, on a more serious note, I know we talked about, you know, Red Hill, all these different water users and fixing leaks and innovative solutions. And when it comes to innovative solutions, I just want to say with all the discussions going on with Lahaina and the, you know, getting water available for the people over there, there's been a lot of interesting presentations about condensators and whatnot. And it's very odd to think about for this Windward side because it's super wet here. But I do think on Oahu, probably on the other side of the island, there might be some, you know, up Maoka and Wahina or something like that, some kind of innovative things to start thinking about, or at least putting out there. I just wanted to make that comment and say there's a lot of interesting stuff going on for Lahaina right now, so those discussions.
Yeah, we're watching it very closely. And I meet on a regular basis with the other water managers around the state, including the manager for the Maui Water Department. So thank you. No, no. Yeah, just actually using the humidity, the water in the air and producing drinking water from that. Yeah. And that's, that technology is, you know, being used elsewhere. Can it be scaled up to the size that we need for folks?
Great way to solve sea level, right?
Yeah.
Thank you very much for your time today. I know Mr. Sakamoto requests a Board of Water Supply brief to ask some questions. So I appreciate you coming. And any other questions? Sorry. Mahalo. One more, sorry, sorry, one more question.
Quick question. So with all the water main breaks that we're hearing about every day practically, there's one more, one more. I was just curious, when you go ahead and fix that break, do you try to go ahead and fix like another 100 yards in all directions? Or, and are we doing preventative types of measures, if that's even possible?
So, so maybe the first part of your question, you know, about, do we want to fix a bigger section of the pipe? Our objective is to try to fix the, repair the break and restore water service to the customers in that area as soon as possible. Because to fix the broken pipe, we have to turn off the water and it affects houses and sometimes lots of houses. So if we, and in some locations, I'm telling my staff, go ahead and go another 20 feet or so, because eventually we will replace all the pipe on that street with the main breaks. But we kind of balance that with restoring water service to people. We have an active program to look for leaks, to try to repair the leaks on these water mains before they become a catastrophic break that causes disruptions and emergencies. And we're using right now satellite leak detection technology. And it's really improved the efficiency of finding and fixing leaks. We are also, when we put a new pipe now, we're looking at better corrosion prevention systems, cathodic protection for the iron pipe going in the ground so that it can last 100 years with minimal problems. So those systems are going in. And I get lots of complaints from contractors and engineers because it's more complicated. But what we're trying to do is install assets, pipes that last a long time with less problems. Thank you.
And thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, everybody. Mahalo.
Moving on to resident community concerns, I think most of those have been addressed at this point. Are there any resident community concerns in addition to what we've already heard? Getting up like you want to talk. No. Okay, good. Moving on to elected officials. Is there somebody from Congresswoman Takuta's office?
Hi, good evening. Kendra Uishi from Congresswoman Takuta's office. Happy New Year to everyone. I'll keep this very brief. I circulated Congresswoman Takuta's year-end newsletters, which most of you probably also received in the mail. So I won't go over that again. But just a couple of additional points. The Congress averted another potential shutdown. So I think we're looking at dates in early March in terms of revisiting the budget. And other than that, Congresswoman Takuta will be on a plane tomorrow. She'll be here for about another week. She hit the ground running as soon as the New Year started, covering all of, or most of the islands in the district. She'll be covering more next week as well as doing some other things here on Oahu. And happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there a representative from the governor's office? Now, that's a disappointment. What's that? Yeah, we supposed to have somebody who's a representative for the governor's office here at this meeting. And we do not. And I'm making those comments because I want it to show on the minutes. Mr. Sakamoto, do you have a question for?
Yes. Thank Kendra for coming and giving the report and also forwarding the report to all of our members about Representative Takuta is doing in Congress. I'd like to know about the issue with the 3.2% increase for Social Security for this year. How did that come about for only 3.2 when the inflation rate is so high? And there were two bills that my organization, National Federation, Brian, talked to Representative Takuta to sponsor for legislation. Her other congressman, Ed Case, already is a co-sponsor. And Access Technology Act, HR 3,702, if she can look into that and have a co-sponsor, I can email that to you. And Websites and Accessibility Act, HR 5,103. She can be a co-sponsor and that's it. Thank you.
Okay, I'll look into that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. No other questions. Moving on to the mayor's representative and then council member Kia Aina.
Good evening, Chair Radke. I'm remote. This is Andy Kawano, Director of Budget and Fiscal Services, City and County of Honolulu. Happy New Year, everyone. Board members and community members. I have a, I have a handful of follow-up items from the November meeting. So I'll go through them quickly. Here were questions again on audible pedestrian signals. And the update I got from our Department of Transit Services is that they installed audio pedestrian buttons at the Kanioehe Bay Drive, Makalali Street, and Kanioehe Bay Drive, Mokri Street locations. And however, due to physical limitations, the 10-foot separation requirement of audio pedestrian signals was not able to be achieved until the intersection is upgraded. HDOT contacted the requester to explain the situation. Hawaii Department of Transportation, HDOT, also later on gave DTS at the city approval to install the second audio crossing signals, even though the 10-foot separation cannot be met. So that will be done by the end of January.
Great.
With regard to the Kanioehe Gardens update, there was an inquiry about the status of the project there. Department of Parks and Recreation referred us to the Department of Design and Construction. And we were informed, as was reported by a presentation at one of our meetings last year, that the project is a requirement of the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. And that's supposed to help to reduce stormwater runoff and pollutants that get into our canals and water pipelines in the Kanioehe area. This project will include large retaining walls on the Makai side of the community garden, and all garden plots will be rebuilt. Our Department of Design and Construction stated that the contractor will start work this month. So it should be starting anytime now. Lastly, there was a report on continuation of unpleasant odors. And, you know, that was at the intersection of Heia and Haiku Road along Tahikiili Highway. Our EMD Department crew investigated the complaint. The crew identified and removed debris causing the odors and sealed the manholes to minimize future odors. The manhole will continue to be inspected every three months. Since our last meeting in November, in December, on December 15th, real property tax assessment notices was sent out. And we just ended the appeal period. And the real property tax And the real property assessment department is currently going through the appeals, organizing them chronologically and by property class. And, you know, we'll start scheduling the review part. I'll take questions after Vice Chair Kia Aina finishes her update.
Thanks, Andy. Vice Chair?
Aloha and good evening, everyone. One of the follow-up items from the last neighborhood board had to do with a deteriorated crosswalk that was a pedestrian hazard located at the intersection of Kamamea Highway and Lilipuna Road. We did contact the Department of Facility Maintenance, who has initiated work order. They're looking for completion by February 20 of this year. According to the department, the work is challenging because of how busy the intersection is. So it will be scheduled on a Friday night and employees will need to be scheduled for overtime. The Department of Design and Construction is currently in the planning phase of a resurfacing project for this area. Two items on the January 24th Food Council meeting at 10 o'clock includes Resolution 23-305, providing for the appointment of Alana Bryant to serve on the Planning Commission. We're very excited for her appointment because she would be bringing her expertise of native Hawaiian issues, the environment and climate change, amongst others. With her appointment, she will be the fifth woman on the Planning Commission. So we're very happy. Anyone who wants to provide a letter of testimony is more than willing to do so, but I highly recommend that those interested show their support at the February 8th Committee on Planning and the Economy at 9 o'clock. And I will share the agenda for that committee hearing when it is agendized. Another resolution that will be held on the 24th of this month is Resolution 23-308. My staff will be putting it in the chat box. It recognizes that the counties of Hawaii have an important role in invasive species control efforts and urges the city administration to collaboratively advance those efforts in the city in concert with state and federal agencies as well as the major stakeholders. And lastly, Bill 6423 F D 1 amends the land use ordinance. This is a continuation of Bill 2010, 2022, that we have been working on for the last two years. It had to be reintroduced because of time expiration for the bill. And so my staff will put in the chat box both the the measure as well as a website, honolulucitycouncil.org/bill64. If anyone is interested in learning more about what's going on with that bill, I highly recommend you contact our office. The next use that we will be considering would be residential use. And that will be in both February and March of this year. I'm expecting agriculture to be likely in the timeframe of, we would be lucky if we hit agriculture by, agriculture use by June. And that's my report.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair. Any questions for? First of all, I appreciate you both coming back to the board with issues that happened two months ago and, you know, keeping it on your scope. We really do appreciate that. So questions for the mayor's representative and for the city council? Laura? Adrielle, and then Donald?
Thank you for your reports, and I'm just wondering about complete streets and when is that going to begin?
Yes, the complete streets, you know, they don't have a set date yet. I think I reported last time that upon checking with the Department of Transit Services, they definitely have it scheduled, but they don't have a firm date. It's gonna, my understanding is that it's gonna happen in 2024 this year. But I don't have a fixed date. When I get it, I will share it at a future meeting.
Okay, if we find out that it's not going to be this year, can we at least get some sidewalks fixed, please? Thank you very much.
Vice Chair?
All right, thank you for the follow-up on especially about the sewage line over at Heia and Haiku Road. Because I do have a tree growing in my storm drain next to our house, but we'll deal with that later. But a little more seriously, I don't know if this is a plaz line, but I really do thank the city workers for what they did over the last few days. We had power outages, stoplights that went down, but, you know, we're back with power and our streets are working again. So thank you for all those who are out there braving the storm. Thank you.
Mr. Sakamoto?
Okay, thank you, Chair. Thank you, Andy, and thank you, Esther, for your reports. Question for Andy is, in the last year, I brought the salary increases. Have you found the money for the salary increases and also for the retirement when they leave? The funding? And then also concern the mayor and administration, will make affordable housing also with the state? Once these homes are built, houses, real property tax can be paid if it's outrageous for new construction. And then I had to, I'm the chair for two meetings for the city. One is for the Committee for Accessible Transportation for DTS and Honolulu County Elections Special Needs. I had to cancel it because there was Office of Information Practices. Our agenda did not comply with Sunshine Law. Would I appreciate if the administration can let their departments know when they schedule meetings to comply with the Sunshine Law regulations? And Esther, thank you for coming. Thank you for bringing the Resolution 23271, I believe, to reduce speed limits in residential from 25 to 15. It's going to the legislature. Thank you for bringing that up and giving it to the legislature. I'll be supporting that and do my best to help you folks. Regarding the situation with capital for the budget coming up, can we find out how we can contact you and put things that we need in the community for budget concerns so we can bring that up for our budget for our community? That's all. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Sakamoto, I'll start off. With regard to the salary increases for the cabinet and any retirement impacts related to that, we have both covered. With regard to the salary increases, I think as I reported last year, the salary increases will be covered by each department through salary savings. We're working hard on filling vacant positions, but we have not filled all of them. We were up, you know, a decent number, but there's still a lot of vacancies at the city. With regard to retirement, our contribution to the ERS has not changed significantly. And in fact, is, you know, in a good place. And we have enough budgeted to cover retirement contributions for the, you know, increases paid to the cabinet members. With regard to your question on real property taxes, would you, may I ask you to repeat that again? I didn't, I wasn't able to write the entire thing down.
Yeah, Andy, I just want to know when you make new construction for affordable housing, how's that real property tax going to affect these people who are, you know, on a lower scale to afford affordable housing? How's that going to be rate in the real top property tax for them? Are they going to get a special rate or they pay it like everybody else?
Actually, yeah, for for developments that provide low-income rentals, if the development has at least 80%, I'm sorry, 20% of the rental units at 80% AMI and lower, that development has a tax exemption against property taxes. Therefore, the renters do not have to cover the cost of property taxes. So that's in ordinance. So I think that's definitely a big, significant benefit for developers that build low-income rental units. So I think that works well for construction of housing units for low-income renters. And with regard to your special need comment, I'll let the administration know that we need to post notice sooner and in advance so that the public's aware of meetings and other conferences that are coming up.
Thank you for that. Can you also try and find out what a start date for complete streets might be?
Yes, I will.
Thank you. And thank you very much for your time.
Chair, yeah, can I just, can I just follow up on some comments that Mr. Sakamoto has raised? First, with regard to Resolution 23-271, urging reduction of the maximum speed limits. The good news is that Senator Chris Lee, who's the chair of the Transportation Committee, led the charge last year. And while it didn't get enacted into law, I'm optimistic more because now the city council is on record. And both the State Transportation Chair as well as the Transportation Services Director for the city are either, they're either supportive or they're not in opposition. So I hope our other Windred lawmakers who are there with you or online will be able to support Senator Lee's effort so that we can move this forward and give transportation officials another tool to help mitigation, to mitigate speed. Lastly, with regard to your comment about budgetary requests, you already know my email address, ekiaaina@honolulu.gov. If you wanted to add anything more that the mayor is going to propose, I have to caution you that we, I mentioned at a town hall a couple of months ago that we are anticipating needing to fund hazard pay, which we are estimating to be in the neighborhood of, this is relating to COVID for city employees. It would likely probably be minimally $100 million. And right now, both the city council and the administration has identified $40 million from Tranche 1 of ARPA funding and $40 million, which we just passed today, out of Tranche 2. That's only $80 million. And so we still have to find funds. I think it's going to be a lean year. One of my priorities, as I mentioned, is I would like to beef up our policing, community policing team. It is down to five members from nine pre-COVID. It's unacceptable because they cover from Waimea Manalo all the way to Kohuku. And I think other council members are probably going to join my call, but that is probably my top priority coming for the budgetary cycle because I'm not anticipating that most of our city council requests will be, get included in the budget because of the lean budget. So I just wanted to let you know that. And that's it.
Thank you. Moving on to our state representatives. Senator Keo Hukaloli has blessed us with his physical presence.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board and members of the community in the cafeteria and online. And thank you very much, sir, for making the microphone higher in anticipation of my arrival, I guess. As you know, the legislature opened yesterday. There are a whole bunch of different issues that we are trying to address. Maui is number one, housing is number two, and then there are just a ton of other items. As Chair of the Commerce and Consumer Protection Committee, a couple of the really big issues that I'm trying to deal with and wrap my head around right now are the insurance market. It's been destabilizing worldwide because of the increasing incidence of natural disasters. And not so much because of Maui, but definitely, I think, a part of it, there's been a tightening of the hurricane insurance market. And there are some legislative solutions that were taken in the 90s after the Kilauea eruption and then after Iniki for the state to enter the market in order to cover the losses of insurers that are leaving Hawaii post-August. That's leading to, if some of you folks live in condos or have had renewals of your homeowner's insurance that are significantly higher, that's what's going on. Prices are going up, but we're trying to stabilize the market and make sure that there are insurers available to write policies at this point. Highly complicated. I know nothing about insurance. We've been trying to figure it out over the last three or four months, really. I welcome expertise or opinions from anyone. There's an invasive species omnibus bill that we've all been working on together that's almost ready to be introduced. We're going to have to probably share the bill numbers with the board between now and next month if you folks would like to participate in the process on that. I highly encourage you and ask your help in getting out the word about testimony. We're going to need it. The administrative rules issue that, you know, I think we came and asked for support from the board on, it's a slower-moving target. Once it's queued up and ready, we're also going to come back to the board and brief you folks on it. But fundamentally, the statutes around invasive species management in the Department of Agriculture are 50 something years old and they were designed to support the sugar industry. Doesn't work anymore. Last thing I'll mention, and then I'll let my colleagues talk, is on February 10th, which is a Saturday, we are planning a mass community canvas in Kani'oehe to cover target areas for little fire infestation that have been established by the Hawaii Ant Lab. We recently met with them. They helped us draw out buffer zones that we would like to canvas with a little bag, with some flyers and information and a test kit. We need help. We need volunteers. The information will be, we'll be sending it out through our newsletter shortly. I think the representatives and I are going to meet on that pretty soon. Essentially, Keapuka, Kuna Hala, the entirety of Kamaoli Stream, Crown Terrace, Kokokahii. So definitely could use your help. And thank you very much.
Senator Awa?
Last time I was here, I told you guys we had the food tree planting project. It was about a month ago. We put 70 ulu and mountain apple in the ground. We lost about four over a month. All mountain apple, we replaced them. Project's going well. Take you guys with that. We're trying to extend that. So we're going to begin talks to extend that towards Temple Valley. And then I also want to get you guys' take at Kani'oehe District Park. Along the fence, there was an idea, there's just an idea, we didn't move on or anything yet, but it's an idea, use that fence for lily poi or something else. So if you guys want, write it to us or ask me. That's something that we're looking at as well. There's been a lot of interest in planting food, hula, haliiva, sword. I'm going to be focusing on that while we're still in session. Got a bunch of bills in session, coming back, trying to find unique ways to prevent outsiders from coming in, buying our homes. Ran into the governor the other day. He said he's going to be having some bill come out that would provide tax incentives for sellers to sell to locals rather than outsiders. So, you know, applaud him. That's a step in the direction that we want to go anyway. And then back on the food tree planting, and I didn't tell Senator Keo Hukaloli this, but maybe we can get him on board with this. We're going to try to change Senate rules, policy anyway, to require all senators to plant at least one food tree in their district per term, just one. So we're going to introduce that too. Thank you.
Representative Pete Tagawa?
Hello, everyone. Good to see everyone. So just a couple of announcements. They already shared some things about the legislature, but as the Vice Chair of Finance, we just completed about almost two weeks of informational briefings where we heard from all of the state departments as well as the governor and lieutenant governor on updates regarding their budget. And all of those are on the Capitol website. So you can go to capitol.hawaii.gov and then it'll have live or on-demand link. And you can watch all of that on YouTube and see all the questions and reports that came out. You can also use that same link to watch us live or on-demand for all upcoming hearings as well as all floor sessions, which we have begun as of yesterday. So just wanted to let you know about that. Also wanted to just touch on kind of yesterday. So just wanted to let you know about that. Also wanted to just touch on kind of the homelessness issue generally, since we were talking about the Kahale earlier. You know, thank you to this board who was really supportive when we created the Kani'oehe Joint Outreach Center, which is right across. And I think as Representative Matayoshi, Senator Keho Kaloli and I, when we started that, it was really based on a need and request from the community that homelessness was such an issue here, and we, they wanted to see something done. So that was sort of the first pilot project we did for three years. Through that, we learned a lot of information about the homeless that are here in our community. And one thing that I just wanted to highlight, because I think there is a fear and possibly misconception about homeless in general, that not all homeless are criminals or do bad things. A lot of them are what they would call hidden homeless. They might be people who are working, they have full-time jobs, but they just don't make enough to make ends neat. So they're living in their cars. They may be couch surfing, staying with friends, but they don't have a place of their own. So those are also people that we have in our community who are homeless, but we may not see them. Through the Joint Outreach Center, we also learned that, as we partnered with the DOE, that there are a lot of students in our community who come from families who are homeless. And so that number, I think, that they shared earlier really includes also that hidden homeless population that we have. So I just wanted to point that out. And I also wanted to share, because we did get $3 million a few years ago, Senator Keho Kaloli, Rep. Matayoshi and I put in the CIP budget, and they are finally going to be doing some work, hopefully this year. So as of late last year, DAGs gave us an update that they were going through permitting for the renovations. Permits should hopefully be done by May, but that was their estimate. And they were estimating about 10 months, so I would say maybe a year until the renovations are done over there. So hopefully by early 2025, the Civic Center will be renovated that will hopefully become sort of a one-stop shop for social services, where Department of Human Services will go. There'll also be a space downstairs where community partners like IHS can use. There'll be a open, larger space for things like Community Court, which also partnered with us with the Joint Outreach Center. And so that's something that is going to be coming to the community. And with the Kahale, that'll hopefully provide sort of that continuum of care that people need to get back on their feet and to become self-sufficient again. That was it.
Rep. Matayoshi.
Right back up. I had a quick update on the repaving project that they're finally doing from Castle Junction to Ko'ala'au View Drive. That that road is now so bumpy that my kids ask me to drive on it because they think it's a fun roller coaster, which my car does not agree with. That is fortunately underway. It did get delayed a little. I mean, we all saw that we all experienced together the rain, but that rain opened up some pretty major potholes on there, too. You can see them paving it in chunks. Last update I got was it should be done by summer 2024, which I hope it does not take that long. It looks like they're making some pretty fast progress, but as they get closer to the residential area, they're going to switch from daytime to daytime work. It's going to slow down a little bit, I think. They're not going to just be able to kind of go full blast. So just be prepared for that. When I get word that it's approaching the residential area, that's going to be starting to be repaired during the daytime when there's more traffic, I'll try to alert the community well ahead of time so people can kind of plan their routes accordingly. I know that's a major way for us to get from one side of the mountains to the other. So legislature's starting. My colleagues already updated you on our efforts with little fire ants, the canvassing that I think is incredibly important to getting this under control. I just want to really emphasize that we have a chance here. We have a window of opportunity to get little fire ants under control. If we lose this chance and they overrun Oahu, they're going to be here forever, and there's going to be no control. And they'll, they'll be in District Park when your kids are playing soccer. They'll be in your backyard. They're going to be in the forest. We have an opportunity right now. We kind of know where they are. Get them and treat them and get this thing under control. We really need the community's help, though. We need everyone in the community that if you're in an area that's marked off that may be infected with little fire ants, to allow them to come in to treat your issue. I, I talked to a lady the other day who was spraying them with Raid, and that sprays the surface ants, but it's not killing the queens that are living in the trees and, you know, in the yard. We really need to treat this properly. So don't, I, I want the community to please take this seriously. Allow us to come in with a proper treatment. It's free, but we need the permission of, you know, if there's this one neighbor that's refusing, the neighborhood is going to continually get reinfected. So we need everyone's help with that. I've got a couple of bills I wanted to highlight. One was driving without a license. After three times, we're going to give judges the ability to just take the car. With Sarayara, that who passed away from a hit-and-run last year, that guy had been pulled over 12 times for driving without a license. He had been convicted six times for driving without a license, and he continued to drive his parents' car. So I, I don't care who owns the car. You know, there, if we're going to give the judge the ability to impound it, if the owner of the car wants to come forward and tell the judge why they let that person drive the car and pay all the fines and the imposures, then maybe they can have the car back. But I think it's time to take a much tougher stance on this, keep our roads safer. 20% of all the traffic fatalities on our roads right now, 20% of the fatal accidents are, have an unlicensed driver involved. That's one in five. That's way too high. And it's going up. I think it's one in four 2021. So hopefully that'll help. I'm still fighting for flavored vaping bans. I'm fighting for free universal school lunches. We've got a couple more nuanced bills, but there are way too many vacancies in the state right now. We're at something like 25% vacancies. We're going to be at something like 33% for the next five years. So I'm really trying to tackle that as the Labor Chair. And lastly, I'm trying to, we're taking one more stab at paid family leave. We'll see how that goes, but I think it could be a real boon to working families, especially when you, when your loved one gets sick, when your wife's giving birth and needs to see that and care for the child, that a family can afford to take time off to to care for that loved one, to care for that child without losing their house or car. So without all the, any questions.
Representative Hasey Burdick.
Aloha, everybody. Thank you so much for the continued virtual access. I got stuck at the office today, so I'm glad I could still participate this way. I just have a quick presentation to share as usual. So as everybody else mentioned, yesterday was opening day. We just started our legislative session. I have three bills that I wanted to highlight for you guys. One is the Plant Sale Standards to Prevent the Spread of Invasive Species. As everybody else mentioned, little fire ants are a huge issue, and we need to crack down on the bad actor plant retailers who are not testing or treating for invasive species. Increasing hurricane shelters, I know that that's a big one for you guys here. On this, the Windward side of the island has no Cat 3 or higher hurricane shelters right now. And I'm introducing a bill to require the legislature to abide by the Sunshine Law in the same way that all the neighborhood boards and even Donald Sakamoto's committee have to abide by the Sunshine Law. I think we would also better get from increased transparency and public notice. It's been a while since I've seen you guys. Since then, we had an invasive species town hall. This one was available virtually, and I posted the video on YouTube if you missed it. The link is there, and I can send it to you. And here's that map that some of my colleagues were mentioning, all of the areas where we know little fire ants have been spotted. This map is continually growing every day. So if everybody just tested your house right now, today, we could get this under control. Send in your samples to this address in Kailua. It's on stoptheant.org. And if you want to take further steps to prevent little fire ants from being spread, the Department of Agriculture is going through the process of a rulemaking change to empower them to stop the sale of infested plants. They claim right now there's nothing they can do about those bad actor nurseries that keep selling even though they're knowingly infested plants. So there's a hearing on January 30th at 6:00 PM. You can show up in person in Honolulu, or you can show up on Zoom, or you can just email your written testimony to hdoa.pq.testimony@hawaii.gov. Hope to see you there. A lot of people have been calling me about the potholes and overgrown grass on Kani'oehe Bay Drive. Kani'oehe Bay Drive is a little tricky because some parts are owned by the city and some parts are owned by the state. But rest assured that my team has been calling them every day for the last two weeks to try to get a timeline on different areas. And they have made some improvements, but not quite finished yet. So I, it's funny that you guys actually mentioned the Complete Streets project already. There is a Complete Streets project planned for all of Kani'oehe Bay Drive to improve the sidewalks and make it more walkable and bikeable for our community. I couldn't get a timeline on this either. They said that they're working on the Complete Street projects for Kani'oehe Town first. That looks like maybe in the next year or so. And then the Kani'oehe Bay Drive is probably going to be the next project after that. So it's probably going to be the next two to three years out. Still working on getting more information on that. I'll let you guys know when I have some updates. And if you're interested in disaster preparedness, I know you've got a new board member who is a member of the Community Emergency Response Team. We have a meeting for the Kailua Cert team on Tuesday, February 20th at 6:30 PM at Castle Medical Center. Everyone's invited. I'll be giving a little update on the disaster preparedness bills at the legislature and some funding. So hope you can all be there. And a lot of people have contacted me about the Kailua Hillside wildfire risk. I know it gets really dry this time of year. It's really green. But we, I've been in discussions with A&amp;B since August. They're the landowner from that. They've insisted that they're doing all they can, and I keep insisting that they need to do more. So they told me they've hired a landscaper to clear the overgrowth and cut 30-foot fire breaks. They have done some of that. It's not quite the whole way, but they're meeting with the Fire Prevention Battalion Chief in January to improve the maintenance program for the area. And that's all I have. Sorry if I went over time.
Thank you very much for all the elected officials. We have a guest that's going to be chatting tonight, and I want to make sure that she has a chance to to stand up here. So I'm going to have all of the board members, if you have questions for the representatives or the senators, I want you to send them to me, and I will forward them tonight to them. Is that okay?
Thank you, Chair.
Okay. Anybody here from Windward Community College?
I am here virtually. Aloha, Chair. Aloha, my kaku. I've got, I'll be real fast because I know this meeting's going a long time. I have three things. The first is, I want to thank the Neighborhood Board and everyone who's provided support. Our enrollment was up over 11% this semester. We led the system in enrollment growth at Windward Community College. Really exciting to see our students back on campus, and we're doing our best to keep them there, engaging. We have senior bash coming up. All of our local high schools on the entire Windward Coast, public and public charter, will, all of their seniors will be on our campus February 27th. We're going to have engagement events, and then we will have the Vitals 808 reggae concert to get all of our local seniors. Information about coming to college, information about financial aid to make it affordable, information about our Hualae Scholarship courtesy of the Harold K. L. Castle Foundation, and then let them have fun and be engaged with their peers. The next thing I wanted to share was legislation. Windward Community College currently is on the University of Hawaii budget for our three incarcerated positions. We've spoken about, sorry if there's a little something going on with my microphone. Anyway, we've spoken about the fact that we're the only community college currently serving incarcerated populations with credit-bearing coursework, and that is being recognized through that. So those positions will last to continue post-grant. And then we also, Representative Martin has sponsored a bill, which has become part of the House Majority Package, to expand our mental health tech program through scholarships, curriculum coordinator instructor, and then a counselor for outreach so that we could grow it actually statewide across the island. And then finally, we're currently accepting applications for middle college. We have a high school on our campus. It's the first in the state of Hawaii. Middle college is having high school students take the majority of their classes at the college. They're working on their Hawaii knowledge and innovation certificate through Windward while enrolled at Kailua High School. They take both high school, college classes, participate in events here. Fridays, they're at Kailua for assemblies and other engagement events, and they're also able to do sports. They get the best of both worlds with a world-class education. Nine of the 18 freshman spots are filled. If you have a relative who's an upcoming freshman, maybe a couple sophomore spots as well. They could apply by doing a GE for Kailua High School, mentioning if they want to be part of Windward's Middle College, which is officially called Halau Haikili Thunder Academy. Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Thanks, Artis. Next is American Red Cross.
Yes. I'd love to introduce Renee Spain, who is, I want to make sure I have the title correct, Director of Regional Disaster Programs for the Pacific.
Yes.
I know that we had hoped that John would be here also. I know he's on Kauai tonight, and you leave early tomorrow morning for Maui. So again, thank you for spending time with us. If you could just please give us an overview with the Red Cross and what we can do to communicate and work with you closely. Thank you.
Sure. I can do that. Just off the cuff, my child over there is a graduate of that college program. So she graduated from high school with her associate's degree and is pursuing her undergraduate. So it's a, it's a awesome program, and I'm so happy to hear about it. So a little bit of background about me. I'm the Regional Disaster Officer, but I've been a volunteer with American Red Cross for 13 years. With that, I've also come from the department, the city and county of Honolulu, Department of Emergency Management. I was their plans and operations officer, so I was helping to write emergency plans. And then I grew up, I guess what is coined as the prepper. Didn't know it at the time, but we were trained as children to live without water, gas, electricity for three months and to kind of like test our strength, right? We thought that was normal, found out it wasn't. But my passion ended up coming back home to to Red Cross. So I share this because I'm a Hawaii, I'm a Hawaii resident. I'm also a mother and a community member, and I'm taking responsibility for my family's ability to survive if an event happens. And I, it's kind of my jam to go out into the community and share community preparedness. I, I love it. I live it. I've been living it from three years old and older. So, you know, I'm here to share with you folks. Hawaii, if you have not been informed yet, Hawaii is, has the unique vulnerability of being islands in the middle of a vast ocean, right? If you draw a circle around Hawaii with Hawaii right smack dab in the center, it barely touches the landmass that surrounds us. If you take that same circle and you put it over Puerto Rico, with Puerto Rico being smack dab in the center of it, same-sized circle, it intersects with North America, South America, and all these other landmass. And it's taking Puerto Rico three-plus years and then some. They're still recovering. So with us being isolated and where we are, it, it hopefully tries to, I, I always try to illustrate how vulnerable we are and how essential it is for everybody to get on board and understand that if we get hit by something that is catastrophic, we are left to our own devices to have to figure out how we're going to survive until the Calvary comes. With that being said, 100% of our items are imports. Gas, our fuel, our food are 100% imported to the state of Hawaii. So if there's a hurricane passing to the south of the state, the ships are being told to stay out, right, until the hurricane passes. When the ships arrive, they're not coming with our disaster supplies and our, and our recovery supplies. They're coming with Toyota's trucks that was already on the ship. They have to come in, they have to offload, granted if the ports are open and not destroyed, right? They have to offload that, then make their way back up to California, go get our stuff and come back. So I try to push this out into the public because there needs to be a better understanding and a level of expectation for our communities to understand that the Calvary may not be able to come because of our reliability on these, these, these essentials that we need. But, you know, Mother Nature's going to determine whether or not we're going to be using them or not. So what does that mean for all of us? For American Red Cross, we partner with the city and counties throughout the state of Hawaii. We support them as an ESF6, an Essential Function Group, Mass Care. We help with the response factor of helping them. The county is the one that chooses the shelters, the evacuation centers. We come with staff and, and the structure and the design of how to manage a shelter with a whole bunch of people. We're currently doing that. It's a different model right now on Maui. We have over 6,000 people that we are now currently sheltering. So everybody's getting really good education and training on how to operate a shelter, kind of not, you're not, you're standard. Back to the, the doom and gloom, right? So ships, our ships bring in our fuel, our electric poles, our food, transportation. Power and gas plants are located in our inundation zones, if you haven't noticed that. Ports are a hub and spoke. So if Honolulu is destroyed, outer islands will not be getting the supplies that they're going to need. Food stores are only stored up to five days worth of food, our food land, Safeway, right? They rely on that ship to come in to replenish their stock. Tourism for our hotels, they have three to four days worth of food, and then they have to rely on ship. And then they have to rely on shipping all of their goods in. Generators will be distributed throughout the state. So do not count on the state bringing you a generator. It's not going to happen. That's the information we're trying to push out to everybody. What does that mean as a whole for all of us? You've got to take care of yourself. I like the idea of growing lilicoa on somebody's fence and tasking every legislator to plant a tree because self-sustainability is actually at the top of the list that nobody really pays attention to. So what does Red Cross do? We go out, there's a preparedness program that we put out throughout the year. We do homes made safer. We install free smoke alarms. We focus on the kupuna. We focus on families with young children. But we put smoke alarms in everybody's homes for free. The cost that comes with that is your time and your willingness to sit and learn about the importance of smoke alarms and what happens if your house is on fire. A lot of the times, people, you know, like in school, we have our children coloring books and saying, yeah, draw a plan, and they come home with a map. There's a whole point to that. The fire department cannot put out a fire unless everybody's accounted for from the house. So I have been on numerous deployments nationally and locally. I've seen a house that was able to be salvaged by the fire department because all the families were accounted for. That meeting spot is super important. When they're not accounted for, the fire department's got to go in and go make sure that no one's in that house before they put out the fire. So I've seen fires consume and eat up the house down to the ground because of that inability to account for your family member. So it's those kinds of educations that we put out there. We also go to schools. We teach a Pedro program. We used to have a pillowcase program that Walt Disney used to help fund. That program's going to be ending this year, but we're still continuing to go out into schools to help our children understand what are disasters, how to prepare for it, and how to cope with it. There's a little bit of miniature psychological first aid training for children to help them learn how to cope with this, you know, scary disasters. We have wildfire home fire campaigns now because wildfire is now a big issue. Behind us brought it to the forefront of the importance. A lot of times, people are like, yeah, 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 yeah. But, you know, Waialua was on fire for a while, and nobody really kind of paid attention to that. Nanakuli is vulnerable. We have our vulnerable spots. We've got to talk about it, we've got to educate people. We have a big Red Cross ready, which means we go out into organizations and we talk about preparedness. We have a ready rating, which talks about businesses protecting themselves, ensuring themselves up to make sure that they are prepared as best as they can be for disasters. We have our Hands Only CPR program. We go out into communities, bring it over here to your neighborhood committee and talk about Hands Only CPR and give you guys some, you know, education on that. Red Cross does responses. We open up shelters. We provide feeding. We distribute emergency supplies throughout departments, throughout communities. And we also respond to house fires. 2 o'clock in the morning, if a house is on fire, you have volunteers that are willing to wake up in the middle of the night and go help this family that's in distress. We put out education. I like dragging a table out to any of these fairs and talking about, asking the family, asking the community members, are you prepared? Do you have a hurricane plan? Do you have a fire plan? And I clicked at once, at once stopped 200 people coming through. And I promise you, 80% of them said, nope, they don't have a plan. What do you mean? It's so, like, just obvious that we have to keep talking about this. We have to keep pushing this education out there, and we've got to stop making assumptions that everybody's prepared. We build our partnerships. We work with service-to-the-arm forces. We have four military bases. We staff those two to three times a week. So we do support our Kanioehe Marine Base. The commanders there will determine what kind of response they need if there's an emergency, if they have a fire, if they have to open up a shelter, and then we lend our support. We have our partnerships with our state, county agencies, nonprofits like Catholic Charities, Salvation Army, Aloha United Way, Hawaii Food Bank. Hawaii Food Bank has this awesome flyer that goes out to people. But one complaint I always hear from people is like, I don't have the money to go store food for all these ones. Hawaii Food Bank has this catch-all great tips on how to prepare your house without having to go run out and go, you know, sell your car so you can go store some food. There's places like underneath the bed is a storage space because people complain, my face is too small, I don't have a place to put food. If you clear out the dust bunny underneath your bed, you have a storage space. But the conversation has to be had first in order for this common sense to be delivered. Let's see. I think I hit everybody. Community Neighborhood Associations is our place where we try to throw out all of this information. I am happy to come back to help present it to your larger crowd if you guys need to, but that's my spiel. Any questions?
Thank you very much for coming. Nope. Again, same thing. If you have questions, send them to me and who you want me to ask of them. We have some board business to take care of, and that's the approval of regular meeting minutes from November. They were circulated, I didn't see any changes. If there were, this is the time you need to make them. So I'd like to open the floor for a motion to approve the November minutes.
Sure. Chair Sakamoto. Is that the minutes I submitted to you folks?
I'm unclear about what you're asking.
I did amend the minutes as Spencer had it posted with board members and residents' concerns were put in.
Right now would be the time to adopt that. So the motion should be to adopt the minutes as written by Sakamoto.
Okay. So the motion as described, the motion would be to accept the minutes as amended by Mr. Sakamoto. Is there a motion?
Sakamoto motions to accept.
Moved. Then seconded, all in favor? It's just a cockroach. Any opposed or abstentions? Okay, that's been carried. We had a letter that everybody had a chance to see supporting the little fire ants. It actually turned into a letter that included all the invasive species and for the Department of Agriculture and the other folks to get off of their okolae and not drag out the rules. Everybody's had a chance to see that. I thought we had approved it two sessions ago, but it didn't. I think it was just a mild discussion without any vote. So I'd like to take the vote now.
Sakamoto motion?
Well, it's been moved and seconded to accept the letter and get it forwarded to the people that's on the letter. All in favor? Any oppositions or abstentions? Okay, Spencer, are we clear? All right. Any board committee report assignments that need to be made? Got it. There was an email version from Haiku. Was it the final? Okay. Any other, I know some of you have attended events. If there's anything really significant that we need to know about, brief it right now. If it's just casual, hold on until the next meeting.
Chair, there are some amendments to the transportation program. Comments were due last night. I asked for an extension. It's basically three projects were Kali Highway, Rockfall project was incorporated into another larger project, widening of Kamame Highway, Wahea Road, and also safety improvements on H3 from the tunnels down to Keonali Road. So if you have any comments, just send them to me. That's all I have.
Thanks.
I'll send in tonight.
Is Charlotte Yamana here? Is Josh Baldavi here? Whoever's responsible for them, let them know that at our next meeting, we'd like to give these to them. And I think that covers everything. Next meeting will, yes? Dale brought up at the very beginning of this meeting that we should go down to the legislature as a PAC and go visit our legislators in their house. And that might be a good thing to, yeah, align with. Next meeting will be Thursday, February 15th? 15th, here at the Ben Parker Elementary School. And this meeting is adjourned.
Hey, thank you.